Call this Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. BOE.
Thanks, man.
Meeting to order. We roll call first. Uh, Mr. Brett Towns.
Present.
Ms. Eleanor Thompson.
Present.
And Patrick Thrawley, I'm here. All right, we have three properties on the agenda this morning. The first one is BOE number sixty-four, which is the property, it's forty-one oh-six Southeast Fourteenth Street in Dell City. Yeah, looks like Mr. Ahmad.
Yes, sir.
Hushers.
Yes, sir.
Asher.
Yeah, I can't get him out.
Come on, have a seat.
That is weird.
All right.
There you go.
I don't know what happened.
Hard massage. Yes, my wife cannot never can say it right.
No, I don't get with you. It's beyond our fault.
Mr. Chairman, is this the one we have a procedural determination first?
That is correct.
Ah, uh, there seems to be a question about.
Yes.
The filing date, which has to be timely or we don't have jurisdiction to hear your appeal.
Okay, yes, sir. I talked to, I, on December twenty-ninth, I bought that property for eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Around February, end of the February, I received the letter that property tax is equal to the cash value or market value. And I came to on March second to Connie accessory office, talked to Mr. Adam. He said, after he looked at, he said, he cannot do nothing about it because when you buy it, it go cash value, actual cash value and tax value going to be the same. He said, if you don't like, I said, that's not fair. He said, if you don't like it, he sent you to the board. He said, he's gonna send me a letter with a form that I can fill it up, I send it to them. And he sent for nine seventy-five. I filled out that form and sent it to the Connie accessory. And after, I guess, March, March thirteen, let me see, March, that was a, the envelope they sent. I think that was March thirteen, I received, after March thirteen, I received, that was March fifteen, I received that one from the Connie accessory and with no explanation, with, with my stamp card and they sent it back to me to fill it up again. And I called Connie accessory, dear person, sorry. I filled out this form, I filled out that form and I sent it to them. They keep that form, that's my copy. And I called Connie accessory, they couldn't answer, where is my phone? So I said, let me talk to the supervisor. I talked to Mr. Steve from the supervisor of Connie accessory. He said, let me talk to the Mr. Hamilton. Is that you?
Yes.
And you'll see why it's not there. I talked to him several times for that. He said, let me send you another one because that's not supposed to be sent it to you, nine seventy-five. It should be nine seventy-six. And he sent it nine seventy-six for, and I filled it up that form and I sent it to you all. And they said they're gonna put the, the date for here, the hearing date, why my property tax is equal to the, the actual cash value. And everywhere else is thirty, thirty thousand, forty thousand different. And that wasn't my fault, sir, I, I.
We're not, well, get into the.
Yes.
Uh, the we've done, what is, what the, we determined just the market value of a property as of January first of this year. That's, that's where, where we, by statute, that's what we look at, just a fair market value.
Well, I bought it in December twenty-ninth, sir.
That don't ma, I don't, it doesn't matter.
You said January twenty-first.
Yeah, it doesn't matter how much you bought it for. It's what's the market, fair market value, uh, that's what we determine. And I don't know what that may be yet, uh, but first we have to determine why you did not file a timely appeal. And I think you're saying that there was some confusion.
Through the, through the Connie accessory. They receive it, they keep my letter, they send me those one with the envelope. You see back of it, envelope date, sir? Envelope, they got it, receive it, that's not my fault, they didn't respond it.
What was your deadline?
That was, uh, three, two, two weeks from that. Three, two, I, I filed it on three, two. I came on, on the office accessory on March second.
Wait, you had the informal hearing?
No, sir. I, they just talked to Mr. Adam over there, sir.
Okay.
And he sent me, he said, he's gonna send me a form to fill it up. And I filled it up that form, which I have a copy of it here, to send it to Connie accessory. They keep that form, just send, they send those one with my envelope, I send it to them. I don't know what, what, what was the phone on. They didn't know explanation. And that's what Mr. Hamilton said, we can make an appointment for, go, yeah, explain to their board.
Did you, did you have an informal hearing?
No, sir.
Where you talked with the assessor about all these?
Informal, yes, informal, yes, yeah. And he said, that's it, that's what it is. That's his answer. I mean, he wanted to convince me that everybody else paying thirty, forty thousand dollars.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute, doesn't matter about what everybody else is doing and cost they, what, what matters here.
Yes, sir.
Is, uh, what was his deadline?
So, I think, did you have it up there?
So, we sent, yeah, we sent it out, we sent the form to him or the informal, the notice of dis- value, sorry, somebody forms on March second.
So fifteen days past that would have been the seventeenth. So I think, I think the issue is, just to kind of cover, is the assessor received the nine seventy-five? Is that correct?
Yes.
Within that deadline, however, the nine seventy-five isn't the form, it's the nine seventy-six. So, once we got the nine seventy-six, once I was able to communicate with him, he did send that to us, but.
When did we get it?
Uh, looks like I was, I clocked that in on March twenty-ninth, uh, which would have been well, well past.
Well past the deadline.
But if they sent him the wrong form.
And I think, I think that's, that's the confusion.
It would totally whatever.
And, and I, and the assessor would have to speak on that because that's their end, so.
So, what form did we send you?
Nine seventy-five. For nine seventy-five, you over put the property value wrong, you put it, uh, hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred. And I corrected myself and you sent me another form, blank one, to, blank form, to fill it out, that. Uh, I didn't fill it up, I called the Connie accessory, talked to Mr. Steve, I said, where's my phone?
Okay, so we, we sent you a nine seventy-five, which obviously is the wrong form.
Yeah, Mr. Adam.
Yeah, because you wanted, you wanted to fill out your informal appeal.
Yes, sir.
He sent you the wrong form that wasn't the informal appeal.
But I filled it up, I sent it on the right time, on the, uh, the March thirteen, you received that. According to that envelope, I sent it to you all. You sent it back, my envelope too, I didn't understand, no explanation, no nothing.
I know. Because I, my appraiser, he, he decided on that day, March second, to obviously deny.
Yes.
So.
He said, that's what it is, when you buy the house, we just do it that way. That's exact quote.
So the next thing should have been the, the nine seventy-six. And are you obligated to send them the form?
I just. If they, if they do request an informal protest form, um, depending on certain circumstances, yes, we can send it to them, send that to them. The informal protest form, if, if they do.
You didn't send him right form, right appeal.
Right, that's, that wasn't me, that's, I don't know what happened there.
We're just talking assessor's office.
Right, 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 yeah. So I'm not sure what.
But I filled it up nine seventy-six, so.
So, yeah, here's, here's our dilemma.
Yes.
Uh, you filed proper form, passed the deadline. Uh, and we don't have jurisdiction ordinarily when that happens, but with, if you can show evidence that, uh, that the fault didn't lie with you, but with the county.
Sir, I haven't got.
I, I understand, I see, I got all these stuff. I'm just explaining.
Yes, sir.
What we're, what we're doing.
Um, I'm gonna have Kyron also speak here, if you wanna.
So, when we do the hearings, the nine seven four is the form they fill out for the protest. The nine seven five, that is the decision that we made. So regardless if there was going to the board or not, every single hearing gets a nine seven five with the value that we are setting it at.
Okay.
Nine seventy-six is a completely different form and that is only on request. And that very rarely happens because on the back of the nine seven five, it states how to get in contact with the board and where to go to get that nine seven six form. So unless there was actual verbiage of the nine seven six form that needed to be sent, that's, that would be surprising just because, I mean, we did hundreds of hearings and I don't think.
Okay, the only question though that I would have is, but somebody sent him a blank nine seventy-five, is that correct?
Yes.
That's the problem.
That's, okay.
That's, if, if, what I'm hearing him say, it's like he was asking, well, can you give me whatever this form is? And he got sent a nine seventy-five, blank. Not that he got sent the nine seventy-five filled out with the denial. And that's when he filled that out and sent that back in, right?
Okay, I get it. So just to reiterate, that form right there, that was give, that was sent to you blank?
Yes. And I sent it to you all back after I filled it up. They sent other paper, they keep that paper, they send other one over there. If you look at the envelopes, sent on thirteen, read my envelope, that's my envelope. You all send it back, you didn't know explanation.
You were treating, you initially were treating that one as the informal protest form.
That's what I asked for it.
Okay.
That's what I asked for it. He said, do you wanna protest that? I said, yes.
And he sent you that instead of the correct one?
I didn't know which one is.
So it, it was your understanding that it was the proper form?
That's, that's, that's mine, I don't.
I get it now.
From a, from a legal standpoint, I think if there, that's sufficient evidence to show that it wasn't his fault.
Yeah.
It was the county sending the wrong, wrong form, so.
Okay, I get it now.
And so I would entertain a motion to, uh, go ahead and hear this because the evidence, uh, shows that it wasn't the taxpayer's fault for failing to meet the deadline, it was actually, uh, the county, uh, sending the wrong form.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that, uh, the Board of Equalization, uh, hear BOE number sixty-four.
I, I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, we're gonna go ahead and hear your appeal. Now it's time to tell us about all the reasons you think.
I'm sorry, I don't, I've never been in this kind of situation.
Oh, I understand. Uh, but, you know, that, that was something that we had to deal with first.
Yes, yes.
So, uh, we're going to, uh, waive the, I don't think we can waive the jurisdiction. I think that there was sufficient evidence to show that it wasn't your fault, it was the fault of the government.
Yes.
Okay, so, and just so you'll know, we don't work for the county.
Yes.
Uh, we don't have a boss in this building.
You're the boss.
Yeah, we're three bosses here, okay? All right, now, uh, tell us what you want us to know about this property.
I bought that property on December twenty-ninth for eighty thousand dollars. Okay? I received letter, form nine twenty-six from the Connie assessor, that property value, tax value and the, uh, actual fair market value going to be the same, which is hundred fifteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, we don't have anything to do with the tax value, only the fair market value.
Hey, but how come is the tax value is come the same market value? That's what I.
Like you said, we don't have anything to do with the taxable value, we're not gonna look at that. We're only looking at this piece of property and what's the fair market value of, as of January first, which was two days after you bought it.
Yes, sir. That's what my, my, this was, why, why it's the same, I have to pay the same tax for fair market value than the.
Okay, but.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Understand that, all we want you to say is, do you disagree that the fair market value is a hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred?
Yeah, it should be somewhere around a hundred five thousand dollars, that's my.
And why?
Why? Because it around that still, because I bought it for eighty thousand. If it was hundred five thousand value, they wouldn't sell it to me. They would not sell it to me, don't put eighty thousand dollars.
Okay. So now you're, you're asking the board to set it at a hundred and five thousand?
Yes.
Is that on the form anywhere?
No, sir, no, man.
Okay, on the form you say eighty? I was having a hard time reading the negativity.
On, on the, the form that we received, there was, the blank of the requested value was not filled in. So he did indicate that the current value was a hundred fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. Yes, but he did not specify a particular amount, so.
Now, I have that, I have that amount on the informal, do you want that, Mr.? Let me show that to you.
Sure, sir.
He, he initially, uh, he had this number right here, eighty thousand is what the, uh.
Uh, yes, that's what I wanted.
Okay.
But you can amend that amount here, and you're saying that you want to amend that eighty thousand to a hundred thousand five hundred?
I think that, that's what.
It's, it's, it's actually, here it is, it's actually there.
Right.
Down in his writing, it says, I paid eighty thousand for this house on twelve twenty-nine twenty-two. You know, on twenty-twenty-three market value the house was, and that looks like one hundred thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, one hundred, that's what I tried to say.
I strongly believe the market and tax is so close. Oh, I see, so you're not saying that, but you're saying it here.
Yeah, a hundred thousand five hundred.
Okay, you're right, Brett, sorry.
Sorry for the interruption.
Excuse me?
I said, I apologize for the interruption.
I'm sure you're, okay.
No, I'm fine, I'm.
I'm sorry, I was just confused, my.
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay, am I correct, it's a hundred and five thousand?
No, a hundred thousand five hundred.
I said, drop, sir.
Hundred thousand five hundred.
I say drop.
That's what the, it was last year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, anything else you want to tell us about the property right now?
No, sir, what?
You'll, you'll have an opportunity to respond to the assessor, the way we do this, we hear you first, then the assessor, and then, uh, you as a taxpayer can respond to that if you want, you don't have to. All right, so hear from the assessor.
Okay, uh, so it was, um, we have it on for a hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and that's what it did stay on. It was a twenty-twenty-two invalid purchase at eighty thousand, uh, it was an estate sale purchase. Um, the comps that, um, he was sent, uh, showed that we denied the value to keep it on it the same, although it does support a median, the median value supports a lowering. He should have been lowered at the informal, but he wasn't given that satisfaction. I'm here to let the board know that, uh, I can't get it down to one hundred thousand five hundred. Based on the median report that we ran, uh, we can get it to one hundred and six thousand. Uh, that's the value that I'm, uh, offering today. Uh, can't do one hundred thousand five hundred, but I can do a hundred and six thousand based on the comps that he was sent after the decision was made.
Okay, and you understand what he's saying?
Yeah, what he's saying, yes.
He's, he's altering by what he had down to a hundred and six thousand, let you understand that we're not bound by anybody's value.
Yes.
We may find that it's more than that.
Yes.
Or we may find it's less than what you want.
Yeah.
Or maybe the same, don't, don't know.
I'm gonna explain to you, because I, I saw you react to him saying invalid sale. A fair market value is an open market transaction. But if you, if there's a sale between one family member and the next or an estate sale, they're generally lower than the real fair market value. So when he made the statement, invalid sale, he wasn't trying to say he really didn't buy it. He was saying things that are sold out of an estate are gonna carry a lower value, less than an open market fair value transaction. For instance, if they had put up a sale sign up on it.
Yes, sir.
And there'd have been that, that would have been one thing, but estate sales generally don't have the correct value.
Yes, but I understand twenty thousand fair, twenty thousand five hundred fair market value, how come it's going to a hundred fifteen thousand?
He's, he's now offering you a hundred and six thousand dollars in market valuation.
And you can, you can take that offer or you can reject it. And like I said, we may determine that it's less than that or more than that, maybe the same.
You know, I, I really think that should be a hundred, hundred thousand five hundred. But if you, your decision is, I don't want your decision.
And that'll be on Friday, we won't sit here right now until.
Okay.
Can I bring up one more thing real quick, sorry? I just, and see, we have to kind of venture out a little bit to find homes that are similar to his. And so here's the subject property, he's off of, uh, Southeast Fifteenth and Sunny Lane.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, we had to kind of go out a little bit to, do some research and they're all relatively close. Now, I, I also did my own kind of report afterwards just to kind of see if I can find any comp, maybe better comps, just for my own benefit to see what we can get. And I, requiring the very little adjustments with square footages very, very close to his, I found six that I can support a, all in twenty-two sales, I can support a value of almost a hundred and thirty-three thousand. But that was just for my own research and benefit. This is not anything that was sent to him, so.
What's the square footage on this house?
Eleven sixty-four, I'm sorry.
Yep, one thousand one sixty-four.
Is this a rental? What are you gonna use for a rental? And what are you gonna rent it for?
It'd be probably two or twelve, hundred, twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty?
Yes, sir.
But is, at this moment, is it rented?
Yes, sir.
At twelve fifty a month?
Yes.
Okay.
But if, if your decision is, you know, one of the six I take, to be, I don't wanna get too, too much into that.
You wanna accept the hundred and six thousand?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, you can do that, you can do that by agreement, uh, if that's what you wanna do?
If that's what I, don't have a choice.
No, you don't have a choice.
You can let us decide and determine it on Friday and we would inform you. Or you can accept the hundred and six thousand value, market valuation today.
Okay, if I didn't accept it today, Friday is gonna be more than what?
No, you don't know that.
We don't know that yet.
We don't know that, no.
We'll discuss it, the three of us on Friday and set a value and then mail it to you, tell you what our decision was.
It can be more than.
Yes, it can.
Oh, yeah.
It could be less.
It's, like he said, he, if he reached a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
If that's one particular house, maybe we can sell it to the market, yeah, that's, that's different story, you know? It's always you can sell to me, the same house to me for eighty, somebody else buy it two hundred thousand, right? That don't mean it's market value of that house is the same.
If it's a arms-length transaction, that's compelling evidence for us, that, you know, if somebody were to come offer you three hundred thousand for that house and you took it, I told me compelling evidence that that's what the value is.
So I guess today, you had to give it to tell us whether you're accepting a hundred and six thousand or working on it.
I understand that you can.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you're rejected, Mr.?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Uh, anything else from the assessor?
No, sir.
Uh, anything else from the taxpayer?
No, sir.
Okay.
No.
All right, well, we're gonna close the hearing on BOE number sixty-four. Uh, the vice chair said we'll be bailing out our decision.
Yes.
On Friday, you'll get it Saturday or Monday, depending on your benefit.
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay? Uh, appreciate your, your, you were here, that's your stuff?
Yes, sir.
And I wanna give back to you. Uh, the, uh, there was a confusion on this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, next year or any, any time that you wanna appeal, you have got to fill out the form that says appeal to the board. Because what you're doing is you're appealing from that informal hearing. And we only look at evidence that was presented at the informal hearing.
That's what he told me, you want a formal hearing, we give you that form, we send you form, you fill it up. I'm lying about that, I just.
Yeah, you may need the form to get to the informal hearing, but you'll need a.
Turn, turn it over on the back and read it and it'll tell you what the form number is.
Yes. Yeah, but the full number says nine seventy-five, that was in front of it too, but.
Yeah, she talked about the back of that form.
Yeah, it says what to do.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't, I just filled it up.
Yeah, it'll tell you what form you need to get and, and, uh, the timeline.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
I went free.
Yes, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE number sixty-four. Open up the hearing on BOE number seventy-nine. Uh, that's property eleven twenty-one Glenwood Avenue in Nichols Hills. Stern Family LLC, Christopher Talis. Did I say it right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, looks like the assessor has assessed this property in the hope of right, because they haven't been for the last few. I got nine hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred, what the assessor came up with.
You're looking at last year's value.
Eight hundred and ninety-seven five.
Well, I had that figure and then I scratched it out and put nine one nine, I don't know why. All right, eight ninety-seven five hundred is what the assessor is valuing that property at. And it looks like you're asking us to evaluate it at five hundred and fifty-one thousand. Is that correct?
No, uh, well, no, sir, I don't think I would, would set it that low. Having had a chance to review the comps that they provided in, in the denial, I would, I would suggest that the value is higher than that.
What would, what would you, what do you?
Well.
You want us to reach a value at?
Well, if, I would, I would put the value at seven fifty.
Okay. Uh, let's see.
I would ask that the board consider that, something we should say.
All right, he's, uh, the taxpayer is now saying he's asking seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, what, what say the assessor?
Uh, we would like to, uh, not accept that.
Okay. All right, uh, last year, see if this is correct, last year was nine hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred, is that right?
That is correct.
All right, and was there an appeal last year on this?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. All right, Mr. Talis, tell us what you want us to know about this stuff.
Sure, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on, on reviewing the assessor's comparables and just, I'd like to speak to a few of them and how they come up with that. I'm not an appraiser by background and I understand some of this and some of this is probably above my head. Uh, they use the six comparables, all at Nichols Hills, um, which is, which is understandable. I, I would start by pointing out, uh, first of all, that there is at the one-one-two-one Belford Avenue, a, a sale at one point five five million dollars is a gross outlier at four hundred and sixty-five, four hundred and fifty-six dollars a foot. I don't know how to explain. I don't know how to explain that sale, I live in this neighborhood as well. Bob Sterns is my business partner, and this is his helm here in Oklahoma City. I don't know what the background is on that sale. I know that they completely stripped that house down to the studs and started over.
That's probably why.
Well, but to pay a million five for a house that wasn't worth near that, and to strip it down to nothing, and start over again. I don't, I don't know if that's part of family planning within that, that family household. But I, I would ask you guys to review and, and consider the fact that that is not quite double, but two hundred dollars a foot more than any other house on, on the assessor's list. And I think it ought not be considered in, in, as a comparable. I don't have, I, you know, I haven't been driving by taking photos of it, but I'm, I'm, ladies and gentlemen, I can say I, I have David, that I've been driving by that house, and they have stripped it to the studs and started over. I don't, I don't understand that economics, because they paid him more money than anybody else in the neighborhood would have for that house, and then have completely renovated it.
There are some, there are some oddities in Nichols Hills. I mean, people will tear down a million dollar house.
Right.
And rebuild.
Agreed, agreed. But usually, but usually you're buying it at land value, it's not an unusually large lot size. It's, it sits nicely on the corner, it does look out over a little pocket park, I give them that. I just, I, I, I'd say that, 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 that is a significant outlier. Um, the, the two that I think, uh, I, I also would disagree with the other million dollar valuation over at Pennington. It's over by the Country Club, it's a two-story, it's been, it's been completely renovated on the inside, it's got a modern kitchen to it. Um, you know, the three hundred and thirty dollars a foot, I, I believe, at that house is, is also too high for this end of the neighborhood. Valuations on our, on this side of the neighborhood, up by Western, these are smaller homes, these are not the larger homes that most people think of when they think of Nichols Hills, uh, which this Pennington house is. When you look at the, they did have the Glenwood house right next door at one-one-one-nine. Uh, that sold recently, and that's immediately next door to the subject property. And he has that, that price per foot at two hundred and forty-seven dollars, that's what traded at, is two hundred and forty-seven dollars a foot. That house has been renovated, it has a new modern kitchen, a large island, eat in, with four bar stools, all modern appliances. Bob's house, the subject property is an older home, has not been renovated inside in twenty years. Otherwise, architecturally, they're similar, lot sizes are similar, they quite frankly, look very, very similar. And I would ask the board to consider comp number one, two hundred and forty-seven dollars a foot, as we traded at, as a much more reasonable valuation for the helm immediately next door. Same architecture, but understanding that one-one-one-nine, I believe, is, would be valued more because of the renovations that have been done interior to it.
What is the square footage next door the same as yours?
Just, I, I, just, just over is thirty-four hundred square feet.
And yours?
Twenty-eight hundred square feet.
Good.
And to be exact, twenty-eight, twenty-one for the subject, thirty-four, twenty-nine for one-one-one-nine Glenwood.
All right, sorry.
What do you have?
Thirty-four, twenty-nine for, uh, the neighbor, and for the subject, twenty-eight, twenty-one.
Okay, so I had twenty-eight, sixty-seven, where did I come up with that? Well, you don't have to figure out where I can come up with that, I just pulled it out of my backside. Video, all right, what else?
And last, but not least, the, the home over on Canterbury, comparable number five. I thought that was a very good comparable. The house is laid out similarly to the subject property. It is a nicely redone home twenty-plus years ago. Uh, it's got a date, a nice, but dated kitchen, just like the subject property. It's got older parquet floors, like the subject property has older floors. It is a master up, like the subject property, uh, with the attic having been renovated. If you look at the pictures from, that were, that are available from the listing, you'll see it's got the, the odd, you know, the, the upstairs is, is kinda cantilevered in because of the, the rafters, very much like the subject property is. And I, I, I don't know that I would argue that it, it's two fifteen per foot. I, the subject property probably is, is market value higher than that. But I do believe comparable number five is, in many, many respects, the most comparable in terms of the quality and character of the subject property, what we're looking at here. So I, I would ask the board to consider, I'd ask the assessor to consider a valuation somewhere between comparable number five, that I just spoke about, and then comparable number two, which is the helm immediately adjacent to the subject property.
See what I have, do you have anything else you wanna tell us right now?
When did you acquire this property?
Uh, well, this is my business partner, and he's owned it, I believe, since he was a young man, and I think he bought it in the eighties.
Oh, okay.
And he's, he's lived there off and on throughout his life.
Okay. So it's not a rental?
No, ma'am, it's not a rental, I'm, yeah, I moved, I moved from Florida to here to take over the business, and he's now living on the beach in Florida, and comes back, I got to that end of that stick. And, but he, you know, he comes back for several months at a time, and stays there still.
How'd that happen?
He's a better horse trader than me.
All right, anything else?
No, sir.
Uh, with her from the assessor?
Okay, so.
Do I have your material in here?
Yeah.
You have it?
So, I did an email. Yes, uh, there, I did not receive the, um, the comps for a couple of these properties. In fact, I believe it's these two. Uh, asked those from the assessor this morning, he did email those to me, so those should be forwarded to you.
Can I see a picture of that?
Yes.
That's a, that's a curve ball for me.
Where, where is this house in relationship to Western?
I'm gonna pull up a map for you.
It's about six lot, yeah, there you go, about six lots off of Western.
Oh, it's just right off of Western.
Here's Will Scherin.
I know, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And these are older, nice, nice, but smaller homes, tighter lots, they're not the big estate lots that you think of in Nichols Hills.
Right.
Are there servants quarters in the back there?
No, that is the detached garage, uh, it, it does, yeah, that's right, and he's got that listed there. It's a detached garage with, uh, living space, a bonus room upstairs.
Okay. They used to call it servants quarters, you live there, there's a service.
I gotcha.
All right, anything to, to hit up from the assessor, did he?
He didn't say, he didn't talk yet. Did you talk?
No.
He didn't talk yet.
So, I can't talk?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, so.
We're here for the assessor.
Well, okay, so, um, we do have it on for eight ninety-seven, five. It stayed on eight ninety-seven, five. I do wanna point out that back in two thousand eighteen, the home was valued at three hundred and twelve thousand dollars before a full remodel was done on the house. And that remodel is. Sorry, so I'm gonna kinda go through it all real quick here. Here's some, here's the MLS listing back in two thousand eighteen. And that's it. Um, last year, we had the value on, actually, I'll start from eighteen, so reflecting the remodel and the market, it went up to eight hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred in two thousand nineteen. Uh, in two thousand twenty, it went to eight seventy-three even. Twenty-one, it went up to nine eleven, five hundred. Twenty-two, went up to nine twenty-five, five hundred. So there's a, the remodel is having a huge effect on this house. And, I mean, and the, Mr. Chalice provided a, a list of some comparables that were, uh, in his report, I kinda wanted to discuss those real quick. There were three, uh, out of the six that were provided, three we can use as an, um, and these were not included in the report. I did a separate little deal for my own benefit to look at these. Three of the six that he provided were invalid, uh, transactions. Uh, one-one-two-three Glenwood was a invalid sale, because for one, it is currently in, on salvage value at five dollars a square foot. It's undergoing a massive remodel right now. Uh, one-one-one-eight Glenwood Avenue, uh, we is, is also on salvage, it's going under a remodel. And then, one-one-one-seven Glenwood sold in twenty-one, but it was a distressed sale. So it was sold pretty much as is, so it was an under-value sale. But, uh, one-one-two-one Glenwood, one-one-oh-one Glenwood, and eleven-hundred Marlboro Lane, those are valid sales, and I kinda did run a report on that. And it came out to a median value of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The problem with those are, is that compared to the comp report we provided in the informal, those are requiring much greater adjustments, and that's why we couldn't use those. And some of those homes are of fair quality homes, older, you know, quality type homes, compared to the comps that we ran. And his is a, um, we've had, we've got his property at, uh, an average quality house, we're comparing his properties to average and good quality homes. And you know, not every, like I said, not every house in Nichols Hills is gonna be the same. So we use, we try to use qualities that are pretty much right there within each other, average and good. And we're just trying to use the best comps we can possible to support the current value of where he's at. And our sales analyst for the Nichols Hills area came up with these, uh, sales to support the value at where we're at right now.
Let me ask a question. Okay, so I, I remember from, um, Monday was the first time I'd ever heard of salvage value, five dollar figure. If you have a property, let's say that was five hundred thousand dollars, and you see him stripping, and you wanna go to the five, but let's say your building permit was seven hundred, why do you not stick a seven hundred value on there?
That might be how much.
Why you wait until it's finished?
Because, uh, we have by rule, if it's completely unlivable on the inside. Yeah, it has to be completely unlivable, stripped down to studs where nothing can be considered livable out of it. And that's the rule that we go by, is five dollars a square foot, plus the land value, and that's their new value.
This, this may not be a fair question, but I'm asking it anyway, both of you. So, on my hypothetical, I don't know, remember if I said six hundred, uh, building permit, at, all along, you've got insurance, aren't you gonna insure that for the full value of what the permit was?
Yes, I, 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 and I don't know what Bob insures it at, and by the way, the remodel is not, I, I understand why the assessor says what he says, uh, but he's not correct when he said that it was a full remodel in two thousand eighteen. Bob has remodeled this house piece by piece over about twenty-some odd years.
Okay.
Part of my point was, a lot of the renovations are plus twenty years, fifteen to twenty years dated, than they did those pictures.
You don't care how much insurance they have?
And I don't know.
It's still gonna be salvage value at five dollars if it's not livable?
Correct, yes.
Curious.
And it, it depends on certain situations. You can have somehow, some of the house, I'm just giving a hypothetical here. You can have a house that's completely livable, except for maybe certain parts, which are, which might be down to studs, but it's not getting the full value out of it, we're gonna make adjustments for that house. If there's certain things that are affecting the value, as opposed to a house that's fully in good condition, we're gonna make adjustments for it. So, yeah, the, and these current homes right now are gonna drive a much higher value when they're completely remodeled, because they're gonna be effective, your build is gonna be a lot newer.
Mike, I know you gave us the market value history a while ago, can you pull that document up? I wanna look at that again.
Yeah, 'cause I'm.
Okay, just let me know how, you wanna go year by year?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one that typically shows it, you know, starting, this would be like in two thousand eighteen, at least.
Yep, so.
Two thousand twenty.
As of January first of two thousand eighteen, three hundred and twelve thousand. And this was before the remodel took place.
Okay.
And then in two thousand nineteen, eight hundred, twelve thousand, five hundred.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty, eight seventy-three. Twenty-twenty-one, nine eleven, five hundred. And then. Twenty-twenty-two, nine twenty-five, five hundred.
So why, why is it lower this year? Eight, eight, nine, seven, five hundred.
Um, that's just based on what the, uh, uh, comps came out to, oh, I'm sorry, uh, that's just what the market told us that the, uh, what it was, and the comp report that we're, we're going by, and the first one supports a value of nine hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars, yeah. I, I don't know if I said that or not, so.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, that's okay. Um, and but even if this has been remodeled over a certain amount of time, we've, we have to go by what the permits tell us, and then we make a decision based on that. And I mean, these are permits that were, you know, taken out in two thousand eighteen, and then, uh, two thousand twenty-two. And, now, I mean, there was one back in, uh, two thousand six.
Right, that, 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 sir, I.
Sure.
That was the remodel of his kitchen and the, uh, master bedroom upstairs, is when that was done in two thousand six. And what, the, the building permit that he's referencing there, I, I believe, I don't know if the detail's available, I would think that was the remake of his garage, his, his detached garage was falling in. And he, yeah, there, isn't that, yeah, see there, remodel and detached garage, uh, those were the permits in that period of time. But the, but the aesthetic improvements that you're seeing in the kitchen and the master, those were from two thousand six.
Okay.
Well, but what happened in, in two thousand eighteen, that it jumped from three to eight, it did a five, you're not talking about that?
Well, A, I, we don't have the opportunity to appeal, obviously, that change from five or six years ago. Uh, what, what, unfortunately, what happened is there was a change in Bob's bookkeeper back then, and he wasn't paying attention. They didn't catch, she wrote the check for the new taxes based on new valuation, and Bob never caught that that change was made.
You do know that we don't deal with taxes, you heard that?
Yes, ma'am, I know.
Okay, now, what I'm asking you is, you, you go back earlier on the remodels and the permits, but there was a big jump from eighteen to nineteen based on a remodel. Are you denying that a remodel occurred in between eighteen and nineteen?
I, I, I'm saying that the remodel occurred, I believe, seventeen, eighteen, and the remodel was the garage, and it was about a hundred thousand dollar remodel. It was not a five hundred thousand dollar remodel.
Sure.
That was, is, are back.
Okay.
And is it a square footage here, like forty-eight, sixty-seven?
No, twenty-eight, twenty-one.
Twenty-eight, twenty-one. And just, just for that, um, a, there's a finished basement where you can live out of, but we don't consider basement to be a gross living area, that's valued separately. And that could be where, uh, some square footages, strategies can sometimes take place. I know that the number you came up with is not reflecting that, but I just wanna make sure, let people know that basement living area is not considered gross living area, because that's valued differently. I know that's not the topic here, but I just wanted to bring that part up.
What about the, uh, servants' quarters?
Is there a bathroom in, at the garage? That's not certainly.
Oh, it's not?
No.
There's no bathroom in there?
There was not, I actually lived in this house in two thousand nineteen and twenty when I moved out here. There's no bathroom in it, so far, nowhere. My boys play PlayStation up there.
Okay, that's, all right, that's not actually servants' quarters, or going in what was considered servants' quarters.
If you wanna. This is December of twenty-two.
Yeah, I don't know if you have pictures from. Yeah, I don't know if you have pictures from, uh, was it seventeen, eighteen? But it, they did, what happened was it was an old detached garage that was falling in, hadn't been used a long time. They had to jack it up, repour the piers underneath, pour new, pour new garage floor. And then, and then set the garage back down, is what they did.
Alright, anything else from the assessor?
No, sir.
Okay, any other response?
Well, I would, I, I, I would like to ask the board to consider the two, you know, we, we, we discussed my comps, the assessor discussed my comps. And I understand that he, he found several of them to be invalid, not mine, but what Bob had put together and found few of them invalid. But the ones that he did not find invalid are, are per foot pricing at one seventy seven, per, per foot valuation is a hundred and seventy-seven, a hundred and seventy-four and two sixty-two per foot. And what I'm, and then looking at the assessor's comparables that he's provided in this package, I again say that, that I think that somewhere around two fifty, two sixty a foot is a very reasonable valuation for this property. It matches several of the other comparables listed in the assessor's list. And it is comparable to the home immediately next door, which has been renovated more recently. And if you look at the pictures and studying, you'll see that they've got a very modern kitchen. This kitchen is outdated, they've got an island, this one does not. Uh, and so I, I, again, I would ask the board to, to really consider the comparables. The, the, the million dollar homes on the other side of Nichols Hills, I don't believe are comparable, not fair to consider. But we should look at these right next to it, at least look at the one right next door. Recognize it's newer and even if you use the same assessment, it would be a material improvement in Bob's position.
Alright, anything else?
Okay, so you, you, you're doing, uh, two, by my calculations, two hundred and sixty-five dollars a square foot. And the assessor's doing three hundred and eighteen, do you agree with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, if, if the assessor doesn't have any other, any other valuation to change, then I guess I'll leave it in your, we'll leave it in your, the board's hands.
Okay. Yeah, I think that last offer from the assessor is eight ninety-seven, five hundred.
Which was the original valuation.
Right, yeah. So where, where in Florida?
I'm born and raised in Daytona Beach, is where I'm from. Bob lives in Melbourne, Florida now, on the east coast, east of Orlando.
Sooner Properties?
Sooner Investment. Yeah, we're re, real estate, retail development, shopping center development.
I, I employed Bob's brother for a while as a school administrator.
Oh, no kidding?
Rodney.
Yeah, Rodney. Yeah, he's down in Florida quite a bit these days, hanging out with Bob. But anyway, so I guess it, it-
We get a letter.
Okay.
We, we, our decision day is Friday, we'll set our values there and then we may-
Okay, very good.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you for your time.
You bet, thank you, sir. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE number seventy-nine.
That's, that's good to know, I guess you couldn't, uh, so good. The theory is can, is it habitable? Cause I, I know somebody's insuring it, if something happened and you got a lot of your, uh, raw materials on site, but the house is not assembled. There's gotta be an insurable value going. Okay, but you're saying he used comps that were not-
Correct. And it may not, and he's the representative of them, so he's obviously referring to the, um, properties that I guess his, uh, friend or came up with what he was saying. He, he may not have had any knowledge of the comps, but, um, yeah. We, I, I went ahead and researched those and thinking, well, these couldn't be, these can't be used, but it's gonna support a much even higher value once they're completely remodeled.
They're gonna have problems with all this rain. You got a house stripped down at this moment.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to close it if you already had, you had another question?
Oh, no, I just, I'm just talking.
Okay.
These poor people, they have some problems. It's lovely to be, to give this kid.
We got one more?
I've got one more, it's BOE number seventy-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If the property is-
One, seven, oh, one.
I'm just hiding over here, a, a short rope, we can kinda blend the furniture here.
And, uh, looks like it's owned by Property Management Services Inc.
That's correct.
And, uh, would you state your name and spell it for the record?
Uh, I'm, uh, Brent B R N T Winsauer, W E N S A U E R.
Winsauer.
That's right, sir.
Okay. Alright, uh, you can saw how this, this property thing goes. We'll hear from you first, then the assessor, and you'll have a chance to respond to the assessor. Alright, uh, looks like the assessor has, I got a question marked by it, so it's probably wrong. I got the assessor at eighty-eight thousand?
That's what I got.
Yes.
Oh, okay, good. And you're asking us for fifty-three thousand, five hundred?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, uh, that valuation is based on and by, by the assessor's definition, an invalid sale. This first property was purchased at the tax sale in June of last year. And the, um, I, with all due respect, I think it's a mistake for them to invalidate those sales. Years ago, when, you know, when the economy was, uh, had hit the dumper, uh, and the oil bust, uh, there were, you know, just hundreds of properties going to sale and very few buyers. That has, uh, the last few years has flipped. And what happens is when the initial list comes out, there's mu, far fewer properties that are behind on their taxes to begin with. And, um, investors go out and seek these people out. And I, I think it's a scandal that, that, that the homeowners aren't more, are better informed. But what they do is they, they make, give, in, in a lot of cases, they, they're given the impression that if they don't sell it to them at this, um, you know, fire sale price before the sale, that they're just gonna lose everything. Well, that's not the case. But you know, people come in and bid them and they pay off the taxes and the, the excess, uh, goes to the taxpayer. And we have seen many times where they didn't know, they could go down there and claim that. They didn't know they had a big fat check waiting for them. And so what happens is, uh, most of the properties never make it to the sale. Either the, uh, homeowner, you know, uh, in the, you know, redeems it in the last, in the eleventh hour, they're allowed to pay. Uh, they don't have to pay all the taxes, they can pay the, the oldest year and buy another year to get caught up on things. And so if they had, if they don't sell it, uh, then, a lot of them are redeemed, uh, shortly before the sale. And then until the, um, uh, treasurer's office actually issues a deed, they can still redeem it. So a lot of times, you, people who thought they bought a property at the tax sale, they find out later that the person came in before the deed was prepared and they're allowed to redeem that. And I, I don't disagree with, uh, with them doing that, so it's, you know, somebody having the opportunity to lose their home. So we intended this tax sale and as has been the case in the last few years, and I've been going to these off and on for thirty years. And, um, there were over two hundred, uh, at, at the beginning of the sale, there were over two hundred bidders. There were less than two hundred properties. So the, the investors that were there looking to buy houses outnumbered the number of houses. And that number of houses that were available shrank. Uh, you know, a lot of times they would skip over them because they had been, they were listed on, you know, in, in the, the publication, but they had been redeemed prior to the sale. So I don't know what the ultimate number of properties that they sold were. But it began at less than two hundred and shrunk. So, uh, you know, we represent a number of investors and, um, they task us with finding investment property. So, uh, after, you know, with a tremendous amount of research that goes into figuring out what you wanna bid in, you are lucky, uh, with the number, with the competition you have there to, you know, come up with anything. We bought a total of two houses, uh, out of it. And in one case, uh, turned out the house was a shell and we presented that at the informal level. And they did knock that back down to what our purchase price was. Uh, we weren't able to get access to it. It was a very intimidating biker looking guy hanging around the front that you, you know, he, he just wasn't having it. And so we didn't find out until after the fact that basically this, you know, that's, he was, um, um, a squatter in this house. And it was, you know, there was nothing in it. So they, they gave us the adjustment on this one. This one, they considered to be an invalid sale, but my, my rejoinder to that is that, uh, there were all, pretty much anybody that might be interested in buying this house was at the sale. They were bidding competitively. Uh, we had to outbid, you know, two hundred other bidders in order to wind up with the house. And so we believe we paid every bit of, of what it was worth at the sale and perhaps a little more. The situation with it is the gentleman who, um, uh, uh, you know, for a while, the guy would not communicate with us. So we began a quiet title action to make sure that, you know, we secured a title to the property. And during that process, when he was served with that, he began communicating with us. And we offered him, uh, you know, when he kinda gave us, disclosed some of the details about the condition of the house that we had not been able to inspect before, we offered to sell it back to him at what we paid for it. Uh, he declined that offer, he kinda liked that big fat check he got. And so since that time, he's been renting it from us, he pays five hundred dollars a month. And, um, we, because of some of the concerns about the condition of the property, uh, when we get it back, we, you know, we just hope he stays there a good long while, I'll just put it that way. So the property, uh, sold at the sale for fifty-three thousand, five hundred and-
And what was it, June eleventh or June twelfth or something like that? It's the second Tuesday of June.
Yeah, it begins and then it runs, you know, just a couple of days these days. This, the, this says, the, the receipt we got is June fourteenth.
Okay, June, okay.
And so, um, the, the house itself and the guy has, he, he's told us all kinds of things, problems with the house and stuff, but he won't let us in it. And as long as he's paying five hundred dollars a month, we're, we're willing to put up with that. I do have some exterior pictures.
What's the square footage?
Um, it is-
One thousand twenty-eight.
One, oh, two, I think.
Yeah, it was built in nineteen fifty-three. It is a, uh, a two-bed, one-bath, uh, no garage, it has a carport. Um, it, uh, the assessor's, um, or the, yeah, the assessor's website indicates it was remodeled in nineteen ninety-four. I, I have no idea what, what was done in nineteen ninety-four, it certainly doesn't show. Uh, but I've got, I've got some pictures of the property.
I have, I have two questions before we get into those pictures. The first question is going to be, was that presented at the informal hearing?
Uh, yes, we, we, we talked to the gentleman about it and he just, you know, we, at that point, I hadn't done, I hadn't comped it out like I have since then. At that point, I was just saying, this is what the property sold for, this is what it's worth. And, you know, they disregard that because it's considered to be an invalid sale. And I think it is probably a, a more accurate, we've got every possible buyer setting there. And, you know, with, with cash, they need to spend, a lot of them are coming out of exchange funds and have that, uh, ten thirty-one gun to their head. Um, they, you know, these are people that are bidding aggressively. And so I, one of the thing, comments that's made during these things, I've heard investors say this, I don't know if any of them have actually done that, but they're so surprised at, at the prices that some of the properties go for, that they said, I, I think I'll quit paying my property taxes and let it come to the sale and I'll get a better price for it in the sale than I could ever get out on the open market. And I don't know if any of them have actually done that, but I, I would say that it's a temptation, uh, given, you know, some of the, uh, jaw dropping prices that those properties line up selling to.
Alright, my second question is, have you been for the board before?
I have.
Okay.
Not this board.
I don't have in my stuff the, uh, notice of the appeal. Do you, did he file it?
Yes, yes, so that's a different document, so yeah. So, uh, the one that I sent you in your packet last week is all we have received prior to this morning, which was just the simple nine seventy-six. So here's a copy of that, if you'd like to view that. Uh, what I've got open there on your laptop is what we received this morning from the assessor.
Okay, that's fine.
Another miss, no, it's another mishap on my part.
Excuse me?
We're, we're okay.
No, yeah, 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 we're okay, I just-
This is the jurisdiction form, right?
Nine seventy-six, yes, correct.
Cause I couldn't find that in-
Yes, yeah, and that, yeah, what, this is just what we received from the assessor. Usually I'm able to compile them both, but since we didn't receive anything till this morning, they were separate.
Alright, as long as it's timed and filed, cause if we don't got that jurisdiction, otherwise we're just spinning our wheels here.
Uh, the pictures, you know, I can say we, we haven't been, the, the guy claims he, he doesn't have operational electric in, in most of the house. I have no idea whether that's true or not.
Fire, fire, fire.
Yeah, so, but, uh, it, it, he's got outside lights that work, so, um, you know, we, we don't know, you know, again, that this guy's been difficult to deal with and, and we're just glad to have a tenant and they're paying rent. The, uh-
Does he pay utilities?
Yes, pays on utilities.
How old a fellow is he?
He is, I haven't met him, I've talked to him on the phone. We have, our process server is the one that has done, that also does other work for us, is the one that has had the most interaction with him. I, I couldn't tell you for sure, I'm, I'm guessing forties, fifties, some, late forties, early fifties. He's had that, he's owned the house for a while, so.
Okay. Well, I just wondered if it was one of the bikers that I dealt with.
Did he, so you paid more than was owed on the taxes, he received the-
Yeah, he got that check.
He got that check.
Yeah, and, uh, he, and he didn't know he had a check waiting for him. You know, we thought, you know, said, you know, if you really wanna hang on to the house, you can use that. And we even offered to carry if he didn't have the, the money to cover the, the, you know, difference, that we would, uh, work out a financing arrangement for him. And he, you know, he may, he may buy the house back at some point in the future, but I, I think he's out spending that money right now, so. But-
Okay.
The, um, the, now the only, um, the comps that I have from the assessor's office, and I brought my own comps, are the ones that are listed, um, you know, here on their, their web page. And so I have looked at those and would, the, at the eighty-eight thousand dollar proposed valuation from the assessor's office, that comes to eighty-five dollars and sixty cents a foot. Um, our, uh, request at the purchase price, fifty-three, five, is fifty-two dollars and four cents a foot. And of the, uh, six comps that they have, there is, every one of their comps is below the eighty-five dollars and sixty cents that they propose, uh, with save one. Uh, and I'll, I'll, you know, go over those individual and explain why, you know, why I think it, it exceeds that. But, um, the first comp they have there is at eighty-five, oh, uh, twenty-eight oh five Shady Brook Way in Midwest City. And that property, uh, is at fifty-seven, fifty-seven a foot versus the eighty-five, sixty they proposed for ours. Uh, and of the six, um, comps that are listed here, I believe that that is the one that is closest in quality and type of property. It's a two-bed, one-bath, uh, no garage. Um, and, uh, like I say, it's fifty-seven, fifty-seven. And it's, to me, it is, uh, pretty indicative of the value of the property, of our property as well.
What's the square footage of that one?
It is, uh, well, six hundred and sixty square feet, so it is considerably smaller. But it is a two, it was built, uh, subject property was built in fifty-three, this was built in fifty-two. And, um, so, uh, it is, it is, uh, smaller, but in terms of square footage, uh, it's, you know, fairly close to what we propose on, on, um, the subject property. Uh, their next, um, listed comp is at twenty-seven oh eight North Trosper. Uh, this is a fourteen hundred and, uh, sixty square foot property that was remodeled in two thousand and twenty-one. It's, was built in sixty-three, so it's ten years newer. It has an attached garage, um, instead of a carport. And even at, at all that, like I say, it was, it was, um, remodeled, uh, in, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. And, uh, they're only, it's on, it, it sold, uh, for sixty-nine, eighty-six a foot. Again, that's opposed to the eighty-five dollars a foot that they proposed to the assessor probably.
And was it a twenty-two sale?
Uh, no, this, uh, no, the sale was, uh, occurred, uh, twenty-one, uh, four nine twenty-one, so. Uh, the third one they have is in twenty-six thirty-two North Shady Brook Road. Uh, it is, um, this one is assessed at eighty-one, sixty-eight a foot, which is closer to what they're proposing. It's still below. It is a brick home or it's a mason reconstruction, I think it's a block home. Um, and, um, it is similar to age, uh, eight hundred and eight square feet. And again, uh, sold for this, their comp and sold for less than what the square foot, you know, price per square foot that they're proposing for us. It's priced at the sale and the sale occurred in, um, August of twenty-one. And it is, uh, it sold for sixty-six thousand, which was, uh, eighty-one, sixty-eight a foot. Their fourth, um, comp that is listed here is twenty-four twenty North Shady Brook Way. Um, it is, uh, closer to the proposed for the subject. It is, uh, it sold for eighty-three, eighty-nine a foot in April of last year. But it is on- But it is on an acre and a half land. The subject property is on a half acre. This is an acre and a half. And it is, um, I can't remember if they indicated whether it's been remodeled or not, but it's, it includes a bunch of additional land. It's three times the lot size and it is masonry as opposed to frame construction.
When you say Shady Brook, you mean Shady Nook?
Shady Nook, I'm sorry, Shady Nook. I brought my glasses with me. Um, the, uh, fifth comp that they have listed here is twenty-six oh one North Outpost Road. Now, this is the, out of all of the comps they've got here, this is the only one that sold for, uh, as much or more. It sold for ninety dollars and thirty-nine cents a foot, which is in excess of the eighty-five sixty that they're on this subject. But it was remodeled according to them. By the way, the sale took place in two thousand twenty-one. They also showed this one having been remodeled, um, in, uh, two thousand twenty-one. The subject property, if it's ever been, it's like, they're saying it was remodeled in ninety-four. It doesn't show. I, I, I don't have any way of knowing whether that's true or not, but, uh, it doesn't show.
I don't have.
Four of their comps. It looks like there's only three comps that they provided. These are just what was listed on their website.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, you send me a curve book and I'm looking at about three?
Yeah. I just go and buy what they have on, on, on the website, which is very helpful. I, um, I, I appreciate the, you know, the thoroughness of the information provided by the assessor. The, uh, final, the sixth and final comp, this one sold for, um.
When you say the sixth and final comp, again, you're talking about?
Ones list, they've got listed on their website, which is all I have. You know, it's all I.
Okay, was all this presented at the informal hearing?
No, at, uh, at the informal, we just, we stood on the sale price, which we, you know, believed and argued was, uh, the best indication of value when we, uh, when we were declined on that. But that, that's when we decided we need to do more research and that was not presented at the informal.
You're, you're an attorney, right?
I am.
You understand that on appeal, we can't look at evidence that was not presented at what's being appealed.
That has never been the case in the past with the Board of Equalization. That is a new rule. I mean, this is not a court proceeding.
It's not a new rule. That's, it's as old as the hills. It's just that apparently they, uh, weren't following the law. We, there's certain things that we can do, certain things we can't do.
Yeah, well, I, I, like I say.
I, I, I've, um, I actually think anything that's a matter of public record is, and especially if it belongs to the assessor, is not his presenting new evidence to us today. That's just my opinion, but, um, um, I need to ask the assessor. When you list these properties on your webpage, are they just recent sales in the neighborhood? Or are you considering them comps?
We're not considering them comps. We, we, we list all, we'll list all sales, but not all, not all sales are going to be, um, similar to the subject. That's why we have a program we can use to weed out the bigger adjusted ones to ones that barely need any adjustment at all.
I know I'm being technical, but I've, I've never, I look at this website all the time and I don't consider them comps. I just consider them.
They call them comps. It says.
Oh, do they?
It says comp sales, address, date, price, ordered by relevancy. That's, that.
Okay, so that comes off the website?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what.
Thank you. Okay.
Name here. Um, the final one is at twenty-six hundred North Trosper Drive. Um, it, um, was remodeled in two thousand eight. It's on over an acre of land, one point one five acres. And it sold, um, in, uh, well, this, this is from back in two thousand nineteen. I would not have used one that, that old, but it, um, uh, sold for less than sixty-two dollars a foot versus the eighty-five dollars a foot on that. I have, if I'm allowed to present it, I've got comps that I think, I, I would put it this way. They support the sales price that was presented to the, they, they are in support of the sales price that we're asking for. We're not asking for less than the sales price. Uh, we're asking for a sales price and we believe that comparable sales in areas support that, if that will allow me to present these. We, we think these are, um, very indicative of the value and would ask, I've, I've never had it, had it brought up as an issue in Board of Equalization hearings in the past, and I don't know why that is. I just assumed that was their rules. They, you know, the, I'm assuming the assessor's going to come up with more, uh, sales and et cetera in, in argument against, and I haven't received any of that. So he'll be presenting evidence that I haven't seen and hasn't, wasn't brought up at the informal. So, and I have no problem with that. And I just don't think that in the interest of fair play, both sides should be able to do that.
Why don't you hear what he says on his comps first?
Okay, uh, on his?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, so, I'm sorry, did you?
No, go, go ahead.
So, yeah, we obviously know by now that it is an invalid arms-length transaction. And, um, we have no way of deciding what that is. That is state statute, uh, verbiage. It is an invalid sale. Um, it is on for eighty-eight thousand. That's what we sent the notice of decision on. Last year's value was seventy-two thousand. In two thousand twenty-one, it was sixty-two thousand. And in two thousand twenty, it was fifty-four thousand. The comps that we used in our report and our system-generated report supports a median value of ninety-eight thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars.
I, I've never seen that report.
No, you got this report in the mail.
I did not.
Anything that we have here was sent to you.
I, I did not receive that. I, I'm sorry. I'd, I'd certainly have addressed it if I'd received it. I don't know if it's a mail issue or, or what it is. I have not seen that.
Well, we sent it to, we sent it to this address right here.
That's the correct address.
Okay.
I, I don't let anybody touch the mail until I get it first, just to avoid issues like that. But I have, I have not seen any.
Now, as far as the pictures you're presenting today, we will scan anything that is presented to us at the informal appeal and those pictures are not in our system, so.
Well, what we ask for is, we ask for onsite viewing and, and they, they just don't do it anymore. They used to, the best results we ever got at the informal was when the assessor would send somebody out and we could meet them at the property and they could see it firsthand. They, they just don't, they, they, I don't know if they do that at all. We have not been able, the last two or three years, have not been able to persuade them.
I want to let you know that, so, the last time we were out here was in September of twenty-two. And if there is no active permit on the property, and we assume everything looks good on the outside and to us, that looks great on the outside, there's no issues with the house. Every four years, every four years by state law, we go out and, uh, do visually, do visual inspections on the property. Now, we don't go out on every hearing or every appeal and look at a person's property. That's just impossible. We have over three hundred and fifty thousand parcels in Oklahoma County that we have to assess every year as of January.
I don't think you get requested that many. We, when we, if we appeal, and we only appealed, um, a couple this year, the tax sale properties, but, uh, we never ask you to come out on the, the assessor's office, to come out on all of them. There's just ones where we feel like that they're not going to get a good picture of the actual condition of the property without an onsite inspection and so we, we, I don't, I wouldn't expect you to do that on all of them, even our, all of, all of ours.
But were your concerns addressed during the informal appeal?
Uh, I, I talked about the condition of the property and, uh, he, basically, uh, the, the fact that, that in a competitive, whether it's a, uh, statutorily invalid sale or not, it's, that doesn't keep it from being an indication of value. When you have every possible buyer for that property competing for it in a bidding process and in some cases overpaying because they aren't allowed to inspect and find all the defects and problems in the property, to assess it well in excess of that is, uh, and to ignore that because it's quote-unquote invalid sale. You know, it, it may be something that you're allowed to do, but it does, if, if the goal is to arrive at the actual value of the property, you're missing the boat.
Mister, let me ask you a question. You, uh, I realize you just walked into this basically six months prior to the valuation.
Right.
However, um, and so you wouldn't have been before us before on this. However, last year's value was seventy-two thousand dollars. And before that, sixty-two thousand dollars in twenty-one, you'd have to go all the way back to twenty, when the valuation was fifty-four, to even get close to what you're asking us to do. So, I, from my perspective, I'm unders, I really liked the argument that you made about whether just because it was a tax sale didn't mean it was an invalid sale. That was a, a good argument. However, because your value is three years old.
Their own comps indicate a lower price per square foot. And what happens is, and I don't, um, and, you know, we, again, uh, we deal with, manage and, and deal with hundreds of properties and we're in here on a grand total of two this year, so it's not like we, we think that they're always wrong or in some cases, if they're wrong, that the, you know, it's capped at a level that we can live with and so we don't worry about it. But, uh, their own comps indicate along, you know, the ones they provided, it says comparable sales indicate. The comps that I have, whether I'm allowed to present them or not, certainly support a lower value. And what happens is, just sort of, you know, my impression is that sort of a general, you know, the old saying that, that a rising tide lifts all boats, that they, because properties around them are selling for more, this thing, you know, this, this guy that, that lived in it, he didn't know, well, he was probably capped anyway. And he didn't, he didn't know, he wasn't even paying his property taxes, so, uh, he certainly wasn't. When they don't get any pushback, like, you know, you occasionally get these anomalies and that's all we come down here is, is the anomalies where we feel like the assessor's valuation is considerably out of line. And, uh, you know, we don't argue with them about, you know, uh, the vast majority. I, I used to and it was just too theatrical, so I didn't do that. You know, we have a stack of, of new assessments about that high and I used to bring these into the Board of Equalization so they wouldn't think I was just some crank. And I'd say, these are all the ones we're not protesting, but, you know, these, these couple here, you know, these are really have an issue.
But you do understand my, my, my thought preliminarily here, that I gotta go back three years.
Yeah, I, 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 I understand that, but that was the assessor without, you know, by their own, ignoring their own comps, ignoring certainly the comps that I have here today and the, the actual sales of truly comparable properties. They've got properties listed in here that have three times the acreage, that are ten years newer, that were remodeled in two thousand twenty-one. And when they use those, as they say, at least on their website, that those are the comparable sales, that's going to give them an in, uh, an inaccurate valuation of this property.
The assessor finished his presentation.
So the thing is with those comps that you're referring to, we'll, they'll have every sale imaginable on there. But are those sal, are those sales going to be invalid or are they going to be valid? And they might even list invalid sales on there, but we go.
Why would you do that?
It's probably, it's gonna list every sale on our site. It's gonna, every, every property that is mentioned, you can look up any property on the county assessor website and it will have what the sale is. Now, you did bring up, you did bring up a couple of, uh, comps that we used in our report that you were referring to from our site. Twenty-four twenty North Shady Nook Way, sold in April of twenty-two. Well, uh, we also have to factor in market trend as of January first. And when we use adjustments, uh, we come out to one hundred six thousand seven hundred five dollars. And then twenty-six thirty-two Shady Nook Way, again, that one sold in August of twenty-one, as you mentioned. When we factor that in, uh, that is less than square footage, same quality.
I'm sorry, that address again was at thirty-six thirty-two?
Twenty-six thirty-two.
Okay, thank you.
The adjusted value with all the, uh, the adjusted time trend value supports a value of ninety-six thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars.
And that, that is a block home instead of being framed. Um, and.
What does that mean?
It's, yeah, a, a brick or, or masonry construction will typically sell for more than, than a property that, um, you know, that's just framed. And, um, the, again, the, the first one, the twenty-four twenty North Shady Brook Way, that's on, on an acre and a half of land. And it is still at the sale price, which occurred in, in two thousand twenty-two, occurred last year, is less than what you're, you're, uh, putting on us.
Per square foot?
Yeah, less per square foot. Uh, and again, three times the, the land, the land area, so.
But anytime, anything that you do address, we make adjustments for everything to get the, those properties as close to yours as possible. That is the goal and that's why we make those adjustments. And yours is, this, the subject is a frame asbestos exterior. The three comps that we're using, one is frame siding, which requires a point seven six percent adjustment. The other one is a frame hardboard, a point seven six adjustment, and the masonry concrete block of one point eight seven percent adjustment.
Difference in land size? Ten point six eight.
Yep, ten point six eight, four point nine six, and then zero, cause the square footage on, uh, their land, square footage on twenty-six thirty-two is the same as, uh, twenty-seven oh one North Trosper.
And with all of that, it sold for, again, less than what you've settled, the, the evaluation that we've been saddled with, despite the sale price that is indicating otherwise. Uh, you know, I have other comps.
Wait a minute, how, how do you figure that, that assessor came up with less than?
This sold for eighty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents a foot and, uh, we're, we're being assessed at eighty-five sixty a foot.
This one was, they got at ninety-three thousand. Is that what you showed?
No, I'm, I was talking about the, the sale price of it, which was a hundred thousand. I was going by the sale price. If they've got it assessed for ninety-three thousand, then it's even more, um.
Oh, you're talking, we're talking about two different properties.
I was talking about.
You're talking about twenty-four?
Twenty.
Twenty North Shady Duck?
Yes, sir.
Way. And I got a hundred and three dollars and eighty cents a square on it.
Uh, it sold for eighty-three eighty-nine.
Well, this is.
The sale price was a hundred thousand dollars. They, they're showing a market value currently of a hundred and one thousand.
I showed the adjusted sale price at a hundred and seven three eighty. Oh, actually, yeah, the actual sale was a hundred thousand. And, okay, I got, I got you. All right.
But other than what I've had to say, that we currently support our value and there's, we've got the comps to support it and there's nothing else we can do about it.
I, I don't think the comp, even your comp, support it. I certainly have comps that, that are.
But, uh, wait a minute, we're just hearing from the assessor now.
Okay.
We're, we're going to debate the thing between.
No, that's what I do want to say though is, if this, uh, home, so if the bidding war ended at twenty thousand, would you consider that a legit arms-length transaction?
I, between all those informed buyers, yeah, if they're, if it ended at twenty, it would be like the other house that we bought that you dropped the assessment back down to where there were enough people in there and, and people that have been in, that have actually gotten, gained greater access to these properties, they will tell other people, hey, that's just a shell. You're bidding on just a shell and that will depress the value. The treasurer doesn't like that because sometimes in that room of people, they'll announce that, you know, hey, there's, there was one just two, in the sale two years ago, that had literally between the time that people, it was a house in the village, had burned to the ground and there were people in there aggressively bidding on it because they weren't aware of that. And somebody mentioned, hey, that house isn't there anymore and all of a sudden the bidding stopped. And there was a considerable argument about the guy who was at high bid that, at that point, whether he had to buy it or not. Not a lot that came out. But, uh, yeah, if, if, if this thing had only sold for twenty thousand, there'd have been a reason. Cause, cause people would, would not have let it go for that. There's a reason why we bid it up to fifty-three five is cause we felt like, part of it was just the pressure of needing, after all the research and work that went into it, of having, you know, like, a lot of the bidders in there that having something to show for it. And, uh, probably, you know, if it'd been, you know, a different market where, um, they, there weren't funds that needed to be spent and few were, few, and, you know, markets were few and far between, we probably would not have bid as high as we did on this particular property. And from what the former owner is telling us, we, we feel like if anything, we're not asking for less than what we paid for it, but we, we feel like we may have overpaid and that's why we offered to sell it back to him at, at our cost.
I, I'm sorry, I'm officially done at this point.
Okay, is there anything else that you want to?
Uh, other than the comparable sales that I brought, uh, like I say, I didn't receive whatever package they sent. It was not received, I don't, you know, and the mail, we all know what that can experience. I'd, I'd love to have had those. But I, you know, I, I think the comps I have support what I'm asking for, which is the. But I, you know, I, I think the comps I have support what I'm asking for, which is the sale price of the property. If I'm not allowed to present that, that's okay. Uh, you all have, have to go by your rules. But there are better comps, uh, that are more, uh, that are more recent sales. I've got two thousand twenty-three sales, uh, of properties that are much, uh, much closer in character to the subject property than, than the ones that I have from, from their website.
Can I say one more thing real quick just to start it? No, you go ahead first, sorry.
No, I'm, I'm good.
What information would you receive in the mail from us? Did you receive a notice of decision?
No, yeah, I received the notice of a decision and I received a, uh, a notice of the, when the hearing was.
Okay, and, uh, about contacting the board?
Uh, no, it was talking, it gave me the time and, um, location of the.
Yeah, I think that's probably what we sent you, the notice of appointment, after we had already scheduled your hearing.
But you did receive a notice of decision stating that we're gonna keep you on for the eighty-eight thousand, right?
I don't remember, I, I think I made, the guy, the gentleman who I talked to there may have, he may have called me. I don't remember that I received a written notice of that or not, but I, I was aware that he had stuck with the original value and that he had lowered the other one that we protested.
Okay, thanks.
And lowered it, by the way, uh, for it being an invalid sale, lowered it to exactly what we paid for it at the tax sale.
No, that's not, I just, um, wanting to verify what was, that, what was actually sent to you. That's, that's all I need.
If y'all are in the habit of sending those out, I will make sure if we don't have it before the hearing next, if I, I'm doing up one of these, I'll make sure and reach out to you and, and, you know, I'm, I'm sure you would have provided it to me if I let you know I didn't receive it.
Usually when we make a decision that we're gonna keep your value the same or adjust the value, we send a notice of decision stating this is what the, uh, value was and this is what the value's gonna be. So you, oh, you said you did not receive that?
I did not.
Okay, okay.
So, so if you do this again, are you gonna be mindful to present to him?
Let, let me kind of explain why I didn't, I felt like that the, the sale price of it, uh, as was the case with the other property, that they did adjust, um, that, that that was a strong enough indication of value. I didn't, you know, frankly, uh, want to take the time to do a whole lot of comps because I felt like the sale price was the strongest. Still believe that the sale price of the property, you know, with two hundred rabid bidders competing in against us was the best indication of value. And I didn't know I would need to, you know, to argue all that. I, I was disappointed in the decision, and I think it is a mistake to, to, you know, if they're required, if they're mandated by law, they're mandated by law. But that, you know, the, the sale prices at that tax sale were a stronger indication of value. And like I say, there, there are people, knowledgeable people there that, like me, have been doing this for a long time who are just astonished at how high some of these properties sell for. It is not a place where you go and get, you get margins. Even, you know, foreclosure sales, estate sales and stuff, those are well-attended, but nothing like the county tax sale. There are literally hundreds of, uh, there were, there were over two hundred bidders at the sale.
If you have some idea, and I understand the reaction you're getting from your tenant, à la ex-owner. But I'm assuming that if I know I'm gonna have to put some money in a property, I'm gonna hold my bid at the tax sale lower.
Yeah.
And obviously, the competition may make me rethink that.
Yeah, if this was in pristine condition, it would have been, we would have been willing to, you know, from what we could tell about the property, it was occupied, so we knew it was habitable, so that's, but, you know. And so, uh, if, but if it had been in pristine condition, then we, we would, we would have had to have bid higher in order to have acquired the property. You know, people that are bidding on it, they, uh, and the thing is that we don't do this, but there, uh, the, all these house flippers and people like that, they go out there and they go out there and knock on doors, so they get inside a lot of these properties that we don't. And, and it's, the thing that's unfortunate about it is people that, you know, they're misinformed about it. I, I know they get lied to, and there, there ought to be some mechanism for the treasurer's office to make sure these people understand that, you know, they need to pay the property taxes. If they can't, uh, uh, pay them, then, then they, what, what happens is, they, I, they send a notice out, I think, of some sort, indicating there's a check waiting for them. They have one year after the sale to pick that up. If they don't, it's gone. And there are, um, there are people who, you know, I don't know if you ever got one of these letters where, hey, there's, there's, you know, government funds that are available to you.
It's gone or goes into unclaimed property.
Yeah, yeah, they, and, but there are people who will, you know, like, for a thirty percent fee, will say, hey, I can give you this big check. And, you know, we've talked to them, we said, you don't need to pay anybody for that. Just go down there and prove, you know, show, give them your ID and prove who you are, and you're entitled to that. But they, you know, they, they, they have these finder services that charge a big chunk of that. And then there's the other people who, who just never know. If they, a lot of times they feel, feel like, you know, a tax sale, I have to move, and they're gone by the time the person takes possession of the property. And so, um, they, they never realize that there's a check, you know, and we always, you know, tell them that. And, uh, in some cases, you know, allow them to rent it if they need some time to move. And in other cases, we, you know, we just, we offer them a chance to buy it back. And, um, in this instance, we had, had an instant tenant that is willing to put it up, put up with the condition it's in. We feel like when he moves out, we're gonna have to invest considerable money to, to make it habitable for somebody else.
Do you, do you remember how much the unpaid taxes were on this?
I think it says here, um, uh, well, it's, it, it shows the opening bid amount, uh, being a thousand seventy, ninety-two, and then costs. So the opening bid, it has to be at either, I can't remember the exact formula, but it has to be enough to cover, there's two different factors, a, a certain percentage of the assessed value or the amount of the taxes. And in this case, with the costs and everything, it was up, it was just fourteen hundred dollars.
What's the minimum bid?
Uh, that was what the bidding started at. And they, they start at the minimum bid that, and, you know, fifty hams go up, and then it, it goes on from there.
Yeah, we're kind of way down rabbit hole there. Uh, is there anything else that you want to say?
Actually, no, because I was, I'm, I'm still trying to get this, whether it's valid or invalid. And that's kind of why I wanted to know what the tax, what the, what the profit, what the taxes were. That's why I asked.
I got you. That's fine. The valid or invalid, I think, is generally set by the assessor because he's had certain rules that he followed.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to abide by state statutes.
Okay.
And that's it. It's, it's written in state statutes.
No matter what, it's an invalid sale?
Do you, do you have, I've never seen that statute. Do you know what, by any chance, what that would? If I contact you later, I'm sure somebody.
Yeah, I can, we can do that.
I'd love to, to read that because I, I, I always thought it was just a policy decision on their part that they can, that when it's a, um, you know, for, a so-called for sale, that, um, it, you know, it's time to reflect market value. In some instances, I would say that that, that either had been or was the case. Maybe to some extent in estate sales or foreclosures, although, uh, those are well-attended these days. But this, the, um, county tax sale is a whole different animal. There are hundreds of the people there. And they, the bidders literally outnumber the properties by the time we get to the sale.
I just wanted to briefly say that, and this is all based on statutes. I don't have the exact statute in front of me. I know we're pressed for time, but bank sale, short sale, multiple property sale, tax sale, sale in distress, estate sale, auction, we all consider non-arm-length transactions. An, an invalid sale or an arms-length transaction, a transaction such as a sale of a property in which all par, all parties involved are acting in their best interest and are under no undue influence or pressure to act from any other parties, must have a reasonable exposure to the market. The condition of the parties to the sale by which each has an independent interest and one does not dominate the other.
Well, that defines this deal. It's, uh, it's exposed to the market far more than some real estate agents taking a sign in the yard and putting it on multilist. It gets far greater exposure. And like I say, now, these people go out well before the sale and, and, and are making offers on, on the properties ahead of time. And so if it makes it to the sale by that time, uh, you know, they're, they're, you know, I'm certain that there were a couple of dozen people bidding on this property, uh, at the time. And, um, a lot of them, like me, just hang back and usually the bidding goes up well beyond what we would pay on a property anyway, so we never bid. It's not that we weren't interested in the property. It's just that if we set a target price of, say, seventy thousand, and the bidding hits ninety, we're already out. We, we never bid on it. It's not that we weren't interested. It's just that we can't, don't feel like we can pay that much for the property.
Okay, I understand. Is there anything else you want to present on this particular piece of property?
Uh, if I can't give you my pictures or my comps, I guess I'm done.
All right, uh, I'm gonna close the hearing on DOE number seventy-seven, which is the last one on our document. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Preparation.
Yeah, and again, their comps, at least the ones that I have, support the whole evaluation, their own comps. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you all.
You have good presentation.
You, you know it's the Arts Festival when it's pouring, pouring.
Yeah, that was the time to go. No crowd.
We got a, we got a medical need presentation this weekend.
Get a deal on an Indian taco.
Yeah, I haven't seen any, any deals on any of that food in a few years.
It meant the truth.
Oh, yeah. All right.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
So we're coming back Friday, right?
Correct, yes. We're meeting tomorrow. This is going to be Friday, and then we're off next week.
And next week, we're here every day?
No, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Monday, Tuesday.
Oh, yours that's right. We're not here Wednesday, that's.
Yes, correct, Monday, Thursday.
Friday, we have an excise board meeting at.
At nine thirty.
Yeah, nine thirty.
This Friday. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, two days from now, correct.
Okay, I'm, we adjourned.
Second.
All of your papers. Okay, how long do you have?